And we can all rise to the front. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Happy New Year, everybody, for the first meeting back. We don't have Ira and Lori right now, but Ira will be here fairly shortly. So with that, I would ask if there are any comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda? There are none. I would ask for a motion to adopt China's agenda.
Second.
All in favor? All right, motion carries. And I would ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda for personnel, item six, special services, item seven, and then business, item eight.
Sound move.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And with that, a couple of things to announce. First off, on the business agenda, we want to thank the Armont for Autism Association for a very generous donation to the district. So thank you very much for that. And then on the personnel side.
And the Tadio family that was instrumental in having that fundraising event and really considering every kid in our school district when they were looking to help us with that donation. That was great. And on the administrative side, personnel, we have a retirement from Mike McGrath. Mike began in 2008 in Byram Hills. He actually was a professor at Fordham when I was going for my degree in administration. And he had been close with Dr. Powderly during their time at Fordham together as well. Mike has been a great contributor to the K-12 picture and kind of bridging the gap for us between K-12 and that college world, having had all of that experience at Fordham and Iona before. Has been a great colleague to all of us, and we are, although happy for him, for retirement is a time when you don't have to get up or worry about snow days or first days of school, but certainly sad time not to have Mike with us in our administrative team. So we want to thank Mike for all of his years with us, and he is always welcome back in Byram Hills. And Susan Sylvester, middle school teacher retiring with 24 years of service. Susan's a very versatile teacher. She has been everything from a classroom teacher, an academic intervention support, a special education teacher, a math enrichment teacher. She has really been a professional who has changed with all of the different needs of the school. I know that toward the end of the year, Kim will have quite a bit to say about her, and we all celebrate in giving her those due accolades for a successful career at Byram Hills. So we will miss you too, for Susan. Okay?
Great. Appreciate that. So now we go to budget hearing one. It's that time of year where we start the process of working for our budget, and we thank the building principals for coming today and joining us to share their budgets with us. And before we do that, we're going to talk about some of the macro analysis initially, and Mia is going to kick it off just to give an overview of the process. We aim to have this be a transparent process where there's ample opportunity for public input and a dialogue, so this really outlines the opportunity for the public to do that in the coming months.
I'm just going to go over the calendar. January 14th, today, budget hearing one. March 3rd is the administration's proposed budget. March 17th is budget hearing two. March 24th is budget hearing three. And budget hearing two and three are when public input is allowed and appreciated. Welcome. March 31st is budget hearing four, and at that point, we do not take any more public input. Budget adoption April 21st. May 5th is budget hearing five, which is a review of the proposed budget, and then May 19th is D-Day, the vote at Prittenden. Prittenden, 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Doors are open.
That's Kelly's big day.
That's right. Super Bowl.
Our budget guidelines are a fiscally sound and responsible budget with, will be prepared using a K-12 approach while controlling expenditure growth and taking into account the board goals, enrollment projections, quality of education programs and facilities, staffing needs, compliance with all federal and state mandates, revenue and expenditure projections and factors, review of debt service and investments, and facility needs based on an evolving capital asset preservation plan, and replacement of district equipment based on needs analysis. Just in time, Ira.
Perfect time.
Good evening, everyone.
Happy New Year.
And to you all.
So the first step in the budget process is the development of the five-year fiscal trend analysis. It's something that's reviewed with the Finance Advisory Committee every year. We use this, we take historical information from this, we use reasonable assumptions in order to project our budget for the next five years. We use enrollment projections based on long-range study. Debt service, we take that into account, helps us project salary and benefits going forward, keeping in mind changes with the Consumer Price Index. So it's really the starting point in the budget process. In terms of district enrollment, this is from our long-range planning study. We'll see, the current enrollment in the district is 2,278 students. Projected to see a decrease of 15 students for next year, 2,263. Keep in mind, this is a projection. Towards the end of the graph, the '23-'24 school year, those students haven't been born yet. So just keep in mind that projection is, it's easier to go one, two years ahead as opposed to going three or four. And the reduction of 15 students, you know, when summer enrollment comes and students come for kindergarten, we can pick up that 15 students. So we could be somewhat even as terms of what we have now and what we will have next year.
And it's probably also worth mentioning that it doesn't necessarily incorporate some of the new development plans that could unfold. They're obviously uncertain, so we don't know for sure. And then we still have the housing stock in town to be back to, you know, levels of where we were.
Right.
No one's predicting that's going to happen overnight, but obviously, there always has to be a sensitivity analysis around this, but this is a good case.
Yeah, you know, it looks like we're semi-leveling off from what we have from '15-'16 down, so we're more in a better leveling off place in terms of enrollment going forward. In terms of by building, so really some shifts between buildings this year. Coleman Hill, seeing an increase of 21 students. Wampus is seeing a decrease of 35 students projected for next year. HCC, an increase of 28, and the high school with a decrease of 29 students. In the high school specifically, we're seeing kind of that fluctuating out of the higher level, high school classes are graduating, so we're starting to see more of a level in terms of the high school and the numbers going forward.
I think, Kelly, to that point, what we've been trying to do at the building is make sure that the staffing is really commensurate with that enrollment. So if I take a building like Wampus, for example, from 2018 to present, Wampus has had a reduction of five teachers and three teacher aides, right? So when you're looking at that cost, that is very much impacted. And to Scott's point, if enrollment should go up, you are talking about potentially having a time in the future in Byram Hills where we're having to hire a lot of staff after those reductions have taken place. So we just have to be aware of that. It's not that we think that's necessarily happening, but good.
This is our view of debt service. The left is the total amount. The blue is the principal of the bond, and the red is the interest. So those two together are the total bond payment. This year is the last year, the last payment of one of our bonds will expire at the end of this year, so that $2.5 million will come off the books for 2021 budget. A lot of districts, when they have an expiring bond, they'll look for some building projects that they have and just kind of replace that debt in order to keep it with the tax formula. At this point, we don't have a project that we feel is necessary in order to go out and bond again for next year, so we'll be reducing that.
Which is good news.
Which is definitely good news.
For taxpayers.
Yeah. So reducing that debt service line. Our last remaining bond that will expire in the '25-'26 school year, and again, that's something, at this point, we don't anticipate replacing that debt as well. So definitely good news.
Ira, do you remember when we took those bonds out?
Only too well. I can't believe I'm seeing them being retired.
I know.
Yeah. It's definitely a good thing, and it's a note to the district. It really does a great job of maintaining their buildings. A lot of districts defer maintenance on their buildings until they need a bond project, and Byram Hills does an excellent job maintaining it. And just another note, in '21-'22, that final bond is callable, so we have the ability to go out and refinance at that point. We'll see what interest rates are and the fees associated with them. If it makes sense, we'll do it. So I'll definitely keep you up to date on that. But if we're able to save some money in the last three or four years of the bond, we'll do so.
Makes sense.
Is there any sense at this point, considering any refinancing where the rates too low?
Well, we only have the one bond remaining after this year, and we can't refinance until '21-'22. So that's the next time it's callable. So when we get that, we will take a look. Rates have been fluctuating, so we'll see another year what it, where it is, and we'll go further. But yeah, we see some savings with that one refinancing. Okay. Salary and benefits projections, just a quick explanation of the slide. On the left side is the percentage of the expense, percentage of the budget. On the right are the total dollars in terms of the budget. The red section is salary, the blue section is benefits. So for example, in '15-'16, salaries were 50.4% of the total budget. This line right here, the 75%, is kind of your baseline in terms of salary and benefits. For most school districts, 75% of their budget usually makes up staffing of salary and benefits. So we've been right along that line. The white line here is, the white diamonds are actual numbers of budgets on a year-to-year basis. The green is our current budget, and blue is projected, or purple, excuse me, is projected going forward. You know, you're seeing some large numbers here in the future. That's not an actual number. The next year, you'll see $95.3 million. That's not the actual number. That's just a projection that we use with the fiscal trend. Okay, so I'm not, we're probably not going to be at those levels, but in order to kind of use all the assumptions that we currently use, it shows the budget as a higher number, but not set in stone just as kind of a way to look forward and adjust our budget as needed.
And when you project out pension and healthcare costs, you just look at the last few years and take an average?
Yeah. No, we, how it's been done, it's been about a percent or percent and a half in terms of TRS, ERS, and it's a set amount. There has been a lot of variations up and down. That's why this projection's not perfect. It's just kind of a way to kind of take a temperature, go forward. But yeah, there's so much fluctuation, it's really hard to do a projection five years forward.
And that's why the reserve is so important, too.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah.
Healthcare.
TRS reserve, yeah.
I'm worried about healthcare in terms of methodology of...
Healthcare, I believe we do 5% on a yearly basis. It's been lower than that in the last couple of years, but that's kind of the base for going for projections of this. Fiscal trend, so what this is, is at the end of the year, you take your expenses and your revenues, and any surplus money is how much you have left over. So for example, last year, we had a 1.73% surplus, so when we closed the books, we had an additional 1.73% of the budget remaining. You see that that's been a little different from '15-'16, '16-'17, '17-'18. Surplus can fluctuate for a various number of reasons. You can have one year where you have a tremendous number of retirements, you have a lot of leaves, you have a mild winter where fuel costs aren't as great. It's a good practice to have at least 2% in terms of surplus for a budget on a year-to-year basis. We were a little lower last year, we were a little leaner in terms of the budget, we had 1.7. But you know, this is a good example. This district has done a fiscally responsible thing and not taxed to the maximum allowable tax levy, which we'll talk about a little later. So you can see, we had the ability to do that, and that's why we did it in the past. And we didn't tax at the maximum allow because we did have some surplus previously.
And is there regulatory cap on that, or it can't be over 5% or something like that?
So you're allowed to, in terms of, so the surplus and this fund balance, you're allowed to have a maximum of 4% fund balance. There's no regulatory amount for surplus.
Okay.
So really, because it can depend on a year-to-year basis if you have an incident. If you have, you know, a roof, government roof collapse in one location, that'll affect your surplus obviously on a year-to-year basis. So it really can depend on, you know, you have a really bad winter, but there's no statutory number that has to be your maximum.
So fund balance percent?
Fund balance is a 4% max, yeah. So true tax rate, I don't have the 19-20 numbers yet. This is last year, the 2018 numbers. What true tax rate essentially is, you pick up your house, and you'll plop it in another district, and you compare all the districts together. That's what the true tax rate is. So there's 54 school districts in Westchester County, and we rank 43rd in terms of the true tax rate. So there's 43, 42 school districts that have a higher tax rate than us, the true tax rate. So we're really in a good spot in terms of this number. Really shows the value of...
We've been pretty much in the mid-40s.
Yep, man.
Since I can remember. It's always been a strength of our budget.
Definitely. Something definitely, and when I get the 19-20 numbers up with that in our next presentation, I want to have that information. But we'll probably be in the same level. Okay, form part, property tax cap and the formula. Quickly, history on the tax cap. It started in the '12-'13 school year. If you remember the last presentation last year, it was set to expire last year, but part of the governor's budget and his agreement with the legislature is he wanted to sign it into law. He got that passed, so it's now into New York State law. So it's going to be something we're going to be dealing with going forward. The only other thing I wanted to point out, I want to just point out that the property tax cap, the only thing the school district controls is the tax levy. There's a lot of changes within each town. Assess values change, tax rates can change, assessments on your homes can change on a daily basis. The only thing the district can control is the actual tax levy that they send out to the people for voting. There was a lot of change in assessed value last year that had, even though we had a low tax levy rate increase, there were a lot of differences between tax rates in different towns. So the district doesn't have control over the assessed value changes in those towns. We can only control what we present to the taxpayers in terms of total tax levy.
And that's a hard thing for a taxpayer to understand.
Yeah.
Like we pull from four different towns, and in my town, the assessed value was higher, so I'm paying a higher portion of taxes than I did last year.
Right.
And that actually doesn't mean that the school district had a very high increase, right? It's just, it's based upon that assessed value. I think it's, that's difficult for people to figure out.
It's difficult to explain. I did field some calls on that and answered some questions, but you've got to think of it as, we're, it's four towns in one district, so we're kind of pooling all our assessed value. Shifts in different towns of larger or smaller can really affect everybody else in the remaining towns. They really kind of make up the difference. So we're all in a kind of a, a pot together, and the shifts in assessed value can really change your portion of taxes.
And that could be a number of houses in your particular town that sold for a higher amount of money.
Exactly.
Right? Influencing your assessed value, and now your taxes seem higher.
And some of the towns, some of the towns where we have 30 or 40 properties, if, you know, a home sells for a significant amount lower or higher than the property assessed value, could significantly affect that, that portion of the town assessed value associated with Byram Hills. And we experienced that.
And the rest of the pie picks up the...
Picks up the difference.
Picks up the difference. That's the big piece.
And we'll talk more about that once we get into the budget process as well. So this is the actual formula that the controller releases in order to calculate the tax cap. I've attempted to simplify it again this year.
Well, let me explain.
I say that every year. But I do want to keep, keep it up there just in case anybody's kind of nerdy like me and wants to see it and kind of work through it that way. I would definitely be willing to sit down and further explain it to a board member or anybody in the community if they really wanted to, so feel free.
But basically, there are a lot of factors involved in that.
Tremendous amount of factors.
Reserves, pilots, allowable tax levy limits.
And I'll get into...
CPI.
See those details. So I had this slide last year, I want to kind of repeat it, I think it's very important. You'll see in the media, the newspaper, there's a lot of confusion on the tax cap, what it is in some of the language. A lot of times you'll hear 2% tax cap, which is, doesn't exist, there's no such thing. It's just kind of a topic and a theme that you'll hear a lot as, as the tax levy limit. So there's really three things you need to know, three verbiage that you really need to understand. There's a tax levy limit, and I'll go through that, but that really is kind of the start of the formula. It has to do with allowable growth factor, Consumer Price Index, so it's really kind of the guts of the formula. And that's, that's a number. If you want to exceed the tax levy limit, you'll raise that number, and that's without exclusions. Okay? The maximum allowable tax levy is the tax levy limit plus any exclusions you have. And I'll get into the exclusions, but essentially, they're debt service minus state aid for most districts is what your exclusion is. So it's really how much you're borrowing versus how much you're receiving state aid. And the final is the proposed tax levy. So whatever you go to the taxpayers out, that go out to the taxpayers at the vote is your proposed tax levy. Here at Byram Hills, we've gone below our maximum allowable tax levy on a yearly basis, so obviously different from proposed tax levy. So I just want to have kind of those base terms so we can kind of speak the same language going forward. But there is a lot of confusion with those, those three topics. So the actual formula. The first step of the formula is you take your current year tax levy, your 19-20 tax levy, $82.8 million, and you multiply it by the tax-based growth factor. So what this is, is the, we have four towns within our district. Every assessor sends up the information to the state, changes in assessed value on a year-to-year basis. The state performs a calculation based on that, based on state averages, formulates it, sends it back and releases it, and that's usually around the November timeline. This year, we have the largest tax-based growth factor we ever had at 1.99%. It's not that we've had huge growth in terms of developments or new companies come in and build, it's really a factor of, Swiss Re had a pilot agreement that has expired. So Swiss Re had a pilot, there's an assessed value role for Byram Hills. Swiss Re got a pilot, they removed their assessment and put it aside in a pilot agreement where they paid, you know, out of the taxes. The pilot expired, their assessed value came back into the tax role. So it's really showing kind of an artificial growth in terms of the area. You know, it would essentially be somebody build a whole $6 million building, brand new, in Byram Hills. You know, we know that didn't occur, it's just they're coming back into the assessment role. So it shows such a large increase in the growth, growth factor, almost 2%. Good for the formula, but going forward, we're not going to see those numbers. It's probably going to be more in the .5, .7 range in terms of growth going year-to-year, depending if we get a lot of developments or there's a lot of turnover in homes and assessed value increases. So that's an important point. That number, again, it's just based on the Swiss Re pilot expiring, coming back on the tax role. It's not an increase in development or new properties.
And then it's netted out on the bottom, basically.
Right. So instead of getting revenue, it comes back in tax dollar.
There is a fair amount of development in the town right now.
Yeah, remember I did that at a board meeting a few meetings ago.
Yep. With growth factors, it doesn't catch up right away. It's kind of a slow catch.
It's a lag.
It wouldn't, yeah. So it wouldn't jump in, if there was development that just got built, it wouldn't jump in the next year, it'd take two years probably. Okay. So that's the first step. You take your tax levy, multiply tax-based growth factor, that gets us to almost $8.5 million. Next step in the process is pilot agreements. There's two sections where pilots play, play an effect. In the, in the top of the formula where you're readjusting kind of your 19-20 tax levy, it's added in, and at the bottom, it's subtracting. So with our tax, with our pilots this year, we have a pilot from IBM in Engleberman of $2.7 million. It's going to decrease next year, it's projected to decrease to two, almost $2.6 million. And again, I spoke about this last year, our IBM pilot, it lowers every year. So it's going down, almost $200,000 next year, goes down $136,000 and $102,000. So we're going to see a decrease in that pilot number going forward for the next three years. It doesn't really, it's not, hasn't been a huge deal here, but a lot of districts, when they have significant shifts in pilots, it can really affect their tax levy number. We've been fortunate that they've kind of inched down instead of kind of falling apart, so good news for us. Exemptions, the final section, in order to recapulate the 19-20 tax levy, so exemptions, there's really three, really two exemptions that apply to school districts. The first is your debt service, so any debt you have, any vehicles you're purchasing, any capital improvements, that total minus any state aid you're going to receive on that. You're allowed to include that as an exemption. Okay? And for us, that's about $6 million. The other exemption that you're allowed is any teacher retirement or employee retirement costs that are over 2%. For this year, the teacher retirement was reduced, went down 1.7%, and ERS went down 1.3%, so there's really no exemption there.
Over 2% increase?
Right. So if it was 10% and it increased to 3%, you'd be allowed to include 1% in your tax levy. So since TRS and ERS both went down this year, we don't have that exemption. So this is where 2% tax levy came from. The last, the next step in this is your allowable growth factor. That's a Consumer Price Index, it came out this morning at 8:30. Perfect timing to get it in this presentation. So our tax, or excuse me, our CPI for allowable growth factor next year is 1.81%. Last year was 2%, the year before was 2%, actually it was 2.4% last year, but the maximum for this formula is 2%. But for the current year, 1.81%, you'd love to multiply that by your adjusted tax levy. So we're at 82.6% or million, excuse me. And then again, the final step, you subtract by your pilots, your anticipated pilots for the following year. So our tax levy limit is a little over $80 million for each year. Now, this is before exclusions, mind you. So once they're, once the exclusions are included, it's, again, ERS and TRS did not increase by 2%. ERS is actually flat for next year. TRS is projected to increase between .4 and .14%. It's at 8.86 now. It's going to be in the range of 9.95 or 10.5 next year. So that's not exemption we can, we're allowed to be eligible for. The only exemption is our debt service vehicles and our improvement minus any state aid we're going to receive. Now, the state aid number is an estimate at this point. The governor's budget is set to release around the 21st, so a state aid run should come shortly after that, so I'll have a little accurate, more accurate number for our building aid. So the next presentation, I'll update. There shouldn't be a huge shift in terms of aid, so we should be right around that $4.19 million in terms of exemptions. So our maximum allowable tax levy is $84,204,677. That's a levy-to-levy increase of 1.67%. Again, this is the maximum allowable tax levy. The district, in the past, has always been below that number. That's something we'll discuss with Finance Advisory Committee and the Board to see where we'll land on that. It may shift again a little, a little bit depending on the governor's budget, but we'll definitely be around in that range. I think it's important to also note, discussed a little bit in the previous slides, that the district has been below the maximum tax levy since the inception of the tax levy formula. The last two years, over $1.4 million, we've reduced below the tax levy, and that's, that's really based on just being fiscally responsible. You know, we saw we have some surplus available in the previous years, and we have some debt service that's coming off. So we'd anticipate we'd probably be below the maximum allowable tax levy next year, obviously with the input of the Finance Advisory Committee and the Board to see where we are. So in terms of the calendar for next year...
Just with the governor's runs and wherever we fall on that, in your experience, that will happen, I guess, the end of January, then let's fast forward to when the budget is passed on April 1st. How much of a delta do you see?
When the budget is voted on.
When the budget is voted on, sorry. If it's voted on, you never know, but what kind of delta do you...
Not a lot.
Not a lot.
Building aid will be pretty standard, there probably won't be a change there. The only thing you might see is an increase in foundation aid, and if that's the case, it'll be very low, very low for this area, unless there's some extreme shift.
Yeah, which doesn't seem likely for this year. Okay.
Great presentation. Questions for Kelly? Thank you, Kelly.
Very well.
Kelly, second one. He's voted on round two as Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Do you want me to read through the calendar?
To my great happiness.
Please.
Yeah? Okay, so January 14th, today, budget hearing one, which is the five-year fiscal trend analysis, the property tax cap formula, and the principals from the four schools will be presenting. March 3rd is the administration's proposed budget. March 17th is budget hearing two. We will discuss programs for students with special needs, computer-assisted instruction, art and music instruction, and curriculum development. March 24th is budget hearing three, which is interscholastic athletics, operations and maintenance, and transportation and revenue. March 31st is budget hearing four, which is the final proposed budget. And at that point, the budget is closed to input from the public. April 21st, budget adoption. May 5th is budget hearing five, which is review of the proposed budget. And May 19th is the vote.
I just want to add one thing to that, which is something that I want to... Every year, we try to remind our community members that... Can you put that back up a second, the calendar? Thank you. That it's the March 17th and March 24th budget hearings two and three, when we solicit community input for items on the budget, either adds, deducts, or other comments. So if you wish to address the board on budgetary items, it's really budget hearing two and three when the floor is open for that. Once we get past two and three, we're really not in a position to be making adds or deducts in the budget. So budget hearing two and three, March 17th and March 24th. Thank you.
And we know the purpose of the budget hearings are to take a look at this budget process and to take the public through all stages of the process. One of the first steps in budget development is the finance advisory committee meeting, and that includes Mia and Mike and Scott. Kelly and I are on that committee also. And we meet various times throughout the year. We met in October and December to develop a budget calendar, budget guidelines, to review facilities, to discuss the per pupil costs, to review the tax beneficiaries and pilots, review a five-year-long fiscal plan, and make recommendations for the proposed budget. So there's quite a bit that goes into this, and I'm appreciative to the finance advisory committee. I said this last year, they have intricate knowledge, as does our board, of our budget. And I can't stress enough how important that is for the superintendent to have that support in that budget development process and oversight, and also the confidence in the public of the school district and the board really working together on that. So thank you for that. And tonight, we have our principals here to talk about their budgets. And they are remaining focused on curriculum and instruction. So you're going to hear each principal tonight tie their goals to the instructional needs when explaining the budget. Of course, we focus on supplies and textbooks and curriculum initiatives. But I would like to say that our principals have been really responsive to enhancing the programs at Byram Hills. I happened to see a News Channel 12 report of our Regeneron semifinalists that I shared with the board. And when they talk about that program, which is just one of the many programs in Byram Hills, and they talk about the exemplary opportunity for students, that's what stands behind all of these requests for a budget. And I would like to say that I'm seeing fiscally responsible principals also. There's a certain allocation for the number of students that you have in your building when you are generating your budget, and it is customary for our principals not to ask for that allocated amount when they don't need that amount. They're really looking to create their programs. So like last year, you're going to see their priorities about instructional strategies in light of the New York State learning standards and English Language Arts and Mass on social studies. We really have been focusing on high-quality assessments and high-quality instruction, whether that's performance-based instruction or project-based learning activities, to really support our teachers in the classroom, to help students learn in a very different way than we had all been instructed. We want design frameworks. We want mathematics to be... Dialogues to be occurring in math classes. That's not something we did. I remember the days when my kids were little and I would ask him, "Why do they have to explain why they came up with that answer?" You know, and now we understand that after a certain level in mathematics, if you're not conceptualizing it, you cannot move forward, right? So we've just made leaps and bounds in that over the years, and I think you will find that these budgets support that and new curriculums that we're trying to continue promoting. So I will start with our youngest learners at Coleman Hill.
Thank you for having us, everyone. The Coleman Hill budget is really based on student enrollment and maintaining our present academic programs. The proposed Coleman Hill budget for 2020-2021 school year is $171,510. This is an increase from this year's budget due to our enrollment projections. Last year at this time, our enrollment projection was for 456 students. And now in September 2020, we are projected to have a minimum of 483 students. As you look at the Coleman Hill budget, you will see that the largest budgetary increases are in our academic supplies, which are utilized to support the curriculum for our students. So for example, our math textbooks line item has increased by just under $5,000. And this is due to the fact that we presently have a six-year license in investigations. As Dr. Longia said, that's a very conceptualized math program. God bless you, Ira. And this six-year license does provide math textbooks as well as the technology component for our students. We still need to purchase this license for our second grade students as well as the projected additional first grade students. Our language arts textbooks and supplies have increased due to books that we will need to purchase for our increased enrollment. And this does include classroom library books as well as our foundations materials, which is for our spelling and phonics program. You will also notice increases in our social studies and science supplies, which are utilized to purchase trade books, as well as materials that support the learning of our students in these areas. And the remainder of the budget is really to maintain our present programs, which include problem-based learning and STEAM initiatives in our technology library center.
Do we have a copy of the individual budgets?
We're going to... Eventually, you'll have your budget binder. I just gave you some access on what to expect.
I was going to just go ahead and...
Okay, so the Wampus budget, I really break down the budget into three big parts when I look at our budget. And the three big parts are, what's our central focus? And our central focus really is on high expectations for student learning, but also high expectations for learning behaviors that will support learning. The two constituents that I always look at are our children first, our teachers second. And the question that I often ask myself this year is, what do we need to be visible in our schools for our children and our teachers? Children need to visibly see teaching, and our teachers need to visibly see learning, and they're reciprocal. So really maximizing our time with teachers in the classroom is a big central focus. It's a big part of our budget. Because what I'm really trying to achieve at Wampus is a collective culture of efficacy for all our teachers. I want teachers at Wampus to know the value they have in terms of being directed and directive in what they do, being active and influential over the children and the curriculum that they teach. Two big areas that we're focusing on this year and last year is really on reading and writing, the essentials of reading and writing, and on math. So I'll talk first about the math. We are engaging in the investigations program, Coleman Hill and Wampus, and fifth-grade teachers are in their first year of the pilot. Our goal with first-grade teachers and their children is that they really do a thorough job of implementing the investigations program. It's a conceptual-based program, which you're familiar with. In allowing them that freedom to read the program, implement the program, and get to know the program, it allows them and their children that time they need to really understand how the program should be implemented. Here too is for our third and fourth-grade teachers, and we're really talking about mathematical discourse, which aligns with 612. Because 612, the math curriculum, has shifted, and we're trying to make sure that K5, we align with that shift. And we're really engaging our teachers and our children in learning about the math discourse that needs to take place from the concrete to the abstract at every level of learning. My commitment continues to be just really investing in really good teaching practices so our students have the best learning opportunities for them at this stage of development, so that they not only grow academically, but they grow emotionally, behaviorally, and that they see themselves a better version of themselves today than they were yesterday, but that they're more prepared for tomorrow and the challenges that come their way by learning the skills of today.
Peggy, I want to make that tangible also. Like, I look at consultant fees. And in 2017-18, the Wampus consultant fee... So these are consultants that come in to work with teachers. Traditionally, it was teachers coming out of the classroom, teachers away from students, who are now working with these consultants to learn. There was close to $100,000 worth of consultant fees in 1718, and another $50,000 during the summer. That's expected during the summer. But now, the 1819 consultant fees were $4,500. As instructional leaders, they were choosing to do a lot of that during the time that teachers were in school and were not with students. And also, Peggy is going into classrooms to work with teachers within their classrooms. So students aren't losing out on that instructional time. So it was not only cost savings, which is pretty amazing, and is probably why there's been a 12% reduction in the budget from Wampus from 2018-19 to present. But also, teachers are... When we're looking at the amount of time teachers are spending out of their classrooms, it's significantly less. We want teachers learning and teachers in the classroom with their kids at the same time. So I applaud you for that, it was great.
And that kind of adds on to the directed and directive culture. Teachers want to be directed, but they also want to be directive because they know our children better than anyone. Those are their... They're in their hands all day.
Great. Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you. It's so nice to be here and speaking tomorrow night. At HCE Critidin, we have a modest increase, a 2.6% increase. It's commensurate with the student enrollment. I think it's a little bit under the allocated amount. So our budget is to develop and advance the curricular priorities of the district and of HCE Critidin, and to give our students critical opportunities. And our community's thriving, so thank you for your support. Our focus and our work at UCC really revolves around student engagement and student empowerment in all their educational experiences. So I'd like to take a moment and highlight four ways that this budget supports those initiatives. So we're going to continue to work on and develop Project ME. Project ME is a year-long student exploration and self-reflection about a goal that they have set for themselves, that they will document, capture, and then reflect upon and celebrate at the end of the year. This work is targeted towards the developmental needs of our middle school students. Second way, our sixth-grade students will benefit next year from a new learning management system from Pearson Education. We're basically taking the traditional textbook and we're bringing in a much more rich and expansive way to support our students. It's digital, so it will include your traditional content of a textbook and so much more. There will be online resources, enrichment opportunities to engage our students, and it is all aligned with the new science learning standards. This budget will also allow our teams to continue, both the discipline teams and our grade-level teams, it'll allow them to continue their work with their emotional wellness goals. If you remember, the emotional wellness goals were created based on the collaboration and partnership with Stanford University's Challenge Success. So we have allowed our teams to continue refining their goals and supporting our students' emotional wellness. And then finally, this budget allows significant work for our staff when it comes to our problem-based learning experiences for our students and our interdisciplinary experiences. So this past year, actually for many years, our faculty is engaged in the problem-based learning, and we are really moving forward in interdisciplinary work. I truly believe that these units, we are piloting them, they give our students a unique curricular connections to really expand their learning and their experiences, and we're going to be able to continue this powerful work. So thanks for investing in our students and allowing them to really engage in rigor and feel supported and feel happy in their learning.
Kim, I think it's great what you're talking about regarding student wellness. You've said the two key words for me, student wellness and rigor, and it's something that I see every principal continuing to support in their schools, whether it's through PBIS or Peggy continuing the Mark Brackett work, in your community meetings with the kids, Kim with the Project ME, and continuing... And Tim's work with Kim and Chris on looking at, when is the next time that we're going to take a survey of these kids and see if this work that we're doing is actually working? And Chris, your continued work on the schedule. So I know that it's easy to go and learn something and not necessarily continue to follow it through, and every single principal is continuing in that endeavor, and that's great for our kids. So thanks.
All right, thanks again for having us tonight. It's always great to be able to thank you for all the support, but then just give you some of the background into the process that we go through to propose our budgets. So the high school will have its lowest number of enrollment since the late '90s. So we're going down to 708 students. We were at a high watermark of 897 back in 2015. So it's a reduction of 3.1% students overall. However, because of the programs that we have established, a year-to-year increase of $1,069 from last year to this year for the building, which represents an increase of .2%. At the high school level, it's probably a much more collaborative approach to building the budget than in the other buildings because we work so closely with all the chairs and directors. And one of the major shifts that we're seeing this year in those discussions are really the conversations around our master schedule and looking at the shifts to going to a new master schedule and what that would mean. And that shift, when we look at it in terms of the programs, is really going to put a real emphasis on instruction. Because all the teachers are really very good at developing their lessons and delivering those lessons in the set amount of time that we have, 49 minutes, and that's likely to change. And the way that we're seeing right now as we go through our process is that that timeframe in class is going to be expanded. So a lot of the discussions are around, like Jen had said, which consultants would be good to bring in? What are the programs going to mean in terms of the changes when we do make those shifts? So again, going into the process, we always want to make sure that the incoming ninth graders, they are able to get access to the same, if not more, programs than the seniors did. This year, we still are going... Next year, we're going to offer 24 Advanced Placement courses. This year, we implemented Algebra for All in the high school for the first year. Next year, we'll be shifting to the 3 and 2 mathematics program, and there's going to be significant changes in the classroom for that. In English 12, we're looking to put in some types of seminars that will give our seniors more choice in terms of what they can take for their English 12 options. Our Language Communications and Career Program is still building and growing and thriving, and we see a lot of growth in that area as well. In terms of our robotics program, it started out as a science elective, and it's really grown so large that it's actually spun off now into its own sort of department, into technology-slash-science. So there's a separate budget line for that. Our Global Scholars Program is really something that we're growing very proud of. One out of every five of our kids in the building are a part of that program. And to have that amount of numbers in just the third year going into the fourth year is really extraordinary. And what we're hearing now back from our students, our seniors, who have been in the program the entire time, is that the colleges are responding to that work. And when they go for the interviews, everything else maybe seems very similar to other students that they're applying with, but that Global Scholars really stands out, and those people that they're interviewing really want to learn more about that. So that program continues to grow, and we continue to support that. In our science program, we see a shift away from straight environmental science and straight astronomy courses into more STS modules. And those modules are going to really be reflective of what we're seeing in society and what the colleges are asking our kids to come in prepared for. So crime scene investigation and forensics. Eye to the sky, which will replace our astronomy. Environmentally conscious citizens. Environmental impacts of natural disasters. Biomedical engineering. Anatomy and physiology. Of course, we're so proud of our science research program, and next year, we will have the highest amount of seniors that we've ever had in the program. And so there's some budgetary increases there as well. Again, all of these projects, all of these programs go to support all of our students who are really coming in and looking to have that sort of divergence of what they're looking for. So anytime that we can offer things that are different, we see that now in terms of what we're offering in English as well, interdisciplinary offerings between the arts and English teachers, or between social studies and English teachers. We see an increase in that interdisciplinary needs as well.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
When does he sleep?
He's not working.
He doesn't need to sleep.
I'm sorry. I have no empathy for this man.
Is it because he has five children?
These are his choices. That's right. Come on, take ownership of this. Here's my question to you. As the enrollments go down, is there any consideration being given to resurrecting what we've discussed years ago, sort of offering courses between schools? Like, I know one year we had, we offered, I forget what language it was, but I think it was between Katona, or I guess John Jay and Byram Hills. It might have been Chinese or Japanese. Japanese. Figuring about that as an example, is there any thought being given to maintaining certain course offerings that may not be available if the enrollment dips, is dipping for the foreseeable future as we grow our demetermographer?
Yeah, that's a great question. We haven't spoken about sharing with other schools, but what we really have been looking into is distance learning. So we partner with a number of different agencies for credit recovery, and we're looking to see whether there's a possibility of using them to support programs that we might not be able to offer with decreased enrollment.
Are there any issues vis-à-vis the state with that?
Are there any issues vis-à-vis state with that? Or is it really, do we have flexibility to do it so long as you can find a quality program that works, that fills a need?
Yeah, so we, right now, we partner with Edgea Seer, and Edgea Seer only goes, they design it based on where the school is. So they'll have offerings in other states, but in New York State, they will only do it based on what they know we require for our school and our state.
Scott, that would be New York State certified teachers to get credit for it? That's a requirement.
That was where I was going.
Yeah. So that's, they'll have, for New York, these are guaranteed that they're New York certified teachers.
And then for the interdisciplinary courses, like Global Scholars, but there could be others as well, any flexibility there in terms of thinking about ways in which we can get credit slots for those courses?
Yeah, so those get a little trickier, only because in Global Scholars, we initially entered into it thinking that in a three-year sequence, we'd be able to get the students a social studies credit, an English credit, and a world language credit. And we're able to do that provided that we have three teachers in each of those courses from each of those content areas because of the certification area. And it's one of those struggles that we face with the state that requires those certification areas. So we're in a good spot right now because we're able to have our English chair, our world language chair, and our social studies chair part of that program, but there's going to come a time when we want to really involve other teachers that have their own certification areas. So it's not a possibility that we're going to have teachers go out to get certified in another certification area.
Right.
So we are sort of trying to be creative with that, but it is difficult.
And if it's two people co-teaching during the same period, you have a seat time issue.
Yes.
So you have to make a choice. But we might be able to have choices if it's a social studies teacher and an English teacher.
Yeah, so we're looking right now, next year, one of the English 12 seminars would be English 12, but it would be multimedia journalism. And we're using Amy Minashe and Catherine Eshoo. So Amy Minashe does the yearbook, and Catherine Eshoo does the oracle, and so there are a lot of really opportunities within that to have a really an authentic, you know, authentic assessment, producing a yearbook or producing the oracle every, you know, every day. But the question comes down to, will that student go in there to get an art credit or an English credit? And we're, you know, our thinking is that most of the kids will enter into it looking for that English credit, because it is something that, you know, when they enter into it, they know that that's a requirement, they're probably going to get the core credit before they'll go and get the elective credit.
So we are experimenting with that in the other English 12 elective, which is the Race, Politics, and Culture course. We approved these at the last board meeting. And that's going to be a social studies and an English teacher, and we're going to allow students to choose whether they want an English credit as their English 12, or as an additional social studies credit. So we're going to experiment with that opportunity there, and we'll evaluate how that plays out for students. We like that choice because then it frees up, you know, the schedule, the kid sees that for their English credit, they can take other things, or if they want to double up on the English course. Lesson two. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. How many new courses do you have since 2015?
It's over 20 at this point.
And, you know, the interesting thing is, and what I love, is that you're transforming the courses to meet the needs of the kids. And I remember years ago, every single content area had a, you know, social studies, nine, 10, 11, 12, right? And we're really working away from that now with some more specialized courses, because our kids are learning things and delving into them at an earlier age, and they're almost ready to specialize a little bit by the time they are leaving middle school. So I applaud you for all of those new courses.
I would just chime in that as we go through the challenge of the budget and the process, what's great to hear is the, number one, the energy that all of you have, so thank you for all that, and really, but most importantly, I think this idea at a board level that we have our minds open, that if there's something out there that we should be doing or pressing, independent of the budgetary constraint, which we then have to weigh, we hope that, you know, your minds are open and, you know, push the envelope where you need to, because I think that's been one of the great things that we've been able to deliver some of these programs via a district. So, you know, yes, we have cyclicality in the enrollment to some extent, but these things change quickly too, so we kind of want to focus on that, you know, pushing the envelope and focused on our kids and educating them, and evolving, because that's so important. So thanks for all that energy. I would hope that you all feel that way, and, you know, if there is some dream thing out there, we hope you're pressing everybody around it, because that's what's going to make us better.
Absolutely.
As long as it's not a heated indoor pool.
Yeah.
Something like that.
The freshmen still think it's on the third floor.
That's right.
I just stopped telling them what I was.
Same thing going at my high school. When I was there, they used to tell the freshman there was a pool somewhere up there.
Just thanking you all for, you know, even with the lowering enrollment and all the different constraints that we have, that you keep up the level of, you know, the stellar, the excellence that our students, you know, deserve year to year, and we really appreciate you finding ways of doing that and working with us on that.
And then I think, finally, I would say, one thing that comes out, I think, in this discussion is just so much consistency, which is great, right? Nothing, I think, that we heard was particularly surprising. Like, it all makes sense compared to all the other discussions, you know, that we've had, and seems to, you know, flow in a really thoughtful way. So thank you for being really thoughtful about long-term planning, and yeah, we look forward to continuing the dialogue.
Ankle hole.
Ankle hole, yeah.
I just want to reemphasize the importance of planning now as the student population is adjusting.
Yeah.
This is something we saw coming, but it's here. And I think as the fiduciaries of the taxpayers, I think it's important that we are very mindful of providing the best for the students, but within budgetary constraints, given the student increase in population. You know, we just can't pretend we have another couple hundred students in the high school, nor am I suggesting we are. But I think it's something we have to keep in mind now as we go forward.
All right, so thank you so much for coming out tonight, Chair.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks so much.
All right. So on to our policies.
Your policies, second read.
Yep, we've got second reads for 1050, which is election and budget vote, 1741, homeschooling, 1925, equal access for parents with disabilities, and then the form along with it, and then fundraising activities.
Sure, so we have the four policies. Gina and I presented those at the last board meeting and answered some of your questions. Nothing has changed since the first read. We certainly can answer any other questions you may have. If you want to know more information, we can also review that if you would like.
Anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts?
They were all fairly straightforward. I want to thank the policy committee for your work on this again. It's helpful, have strong policies.
All right, with that, I would ask for a motion to approve these policies. All in favor? All right. I'll start with that. So, ah, per pupil.
Per pupil, I know you were very excited.
But we still don't have the comparison, right? We're still waiting for the state.
It still is a whole lot of nothing.
So it was due August 30th from all school districts that were required to do it, and our submission was finally approved on December 6th, so we're still waiting for the state to approve the majority of districts within Westchester County. Once I have that information, I'll definitely be ready to prepare the report and that for you. Originally in September when I presented, I thought it'd be in December where we talked about it, but it's January and I still have the data. I'm sure Tim has felt that.
And is that, is that districts not turning their data in?
No, no. Every district, well, not every district, but most districts met that deadline. The state has been reviewing, reviewing, and asking further questions.
We just wanted to know.
Yeah, play the state.
Without doubt.
Still waiting for some.
And then do they publish all of it at the same time? Is that what ends up happening?
So you submit it, and then it gets approved. So there are drips and drags approving them, so.
So is our number somewhere out on the state website at this point?
Yes.
It is. So as they approve, they populate?
Yes, very, very slowly. But I do want to remind you, this is a little different from the per pupil we've seen in the past with the SSA requirements. It's, and this is the slide from, one of my slides from the presentation from September, they're removing the transportation debt service and any students that aren't within your building. So it's going to be more of an accurate number to compare districts side by side. You know, in the past, it's been, well, we have transportation, you know, and so the districts, you know, contract out, so it's going to be more of an accurate number. There are going to be some variables district to district, depending on, there's a caveat in there, depending on, you know, the seniority of your staff or various things like that. If you have a high staff that's very experienced, whereas another district might have a lot of retirement. So there is going to be some small variations, but this should be, once it's released, more of an accurate comparison, a better comparison than we see in the past. So sorry, I don't have any free this meeting, but I'm hoping it gets released very soon.
We look forward to it. All right. And given that we have Princeton plan, that makes it a little bit, you know, at least within the district, it's not the same issue that other districts have. All right, well, this is an exciting item, item 11.1, 2020-21 District Calendar, that we know many from the community are waiting for, and I understand why. So why don't we get a good summary?
Gina, why don't I turn it to you?
Sure, so similar to 2015, 2016 school year, Labor Day this year falls on September 7th, so therefore, we're proposing that kids return to school for opening day on September 1st as they had done in 2015, with our superintendent conference days on the 26th and 27th for faculty. Our last day would be on June 25th, which is the state rating day with our regents exam period from Wednesday, June 16th through Thursday, June 24th. Similar to this current calendar for this school year, there is a two-week vacation in there at the holiday time, and everything else pretty much remains similar to this year.
And we've been careful to put those, we had some parents request this two years ago, we did it this year, which was pretty helpful, putting superintendent conference days either on a Friday or after a long weekend. Parents were telling us that that was helpful to them, and we continue to do that.
That's a really positive, I think, change.
Oh, yeah.
Really positive feedback on that. And I think generally, the calendar understandably creates a lot of passion, and on all sides, and we just came up with a two-week break, I think for the most part, I mean, the feedback that I got was extraordinarily positive, especially for students that are in the high school, where at the end of the day, their coursework is probably fairly analogous to what they get in college. And in college, they're getting more than two weeks' break, and just from a standpoint of workload, not a bad thing. On the other hand, there's always some voices that, you know, don't like a two-week break, and so that's totally understandable. So, you know, try to balance all that.
You may have a different reaction if you have younger children and you're, you know, a working parent and Mia, if you're Mia.
It was very difficult having them have two weeks.
Well, I have working children.
You are lucky.
It's a good thing, yeah.
Why are two young to work?
I would make you take a vacation and watch Mia's kids.
Yeah, really. Gladly ship mine off to the coal mines.
Although I had quite a few parents who told me that, you know, knowing the calendar in advance is really key for them, because they could either rely on friends or family members if they are working parents, and, you know, especially when it's connected to a holiday, it's easier.
My question, I guess we just should discuss it for a minute, is an obvious one, which is really starting school before Labor Day, which is a little unusual for Byram Hills, which usually traditionally, I would almost say, we start the day after Labor Day. And again, having very little dog in the fight, I still think we have to, we should discuss it, that many families do vacation the week before Labor Day. And whether, no matter when we publish this calendar, be it tomorrow, a month, two months from now, this may have an impact in plans and family reunions and the like, so I think we should just be sure this is what we want to do.
Two good things to note are, first, a few good things, you know, I had a discussion with the PTSA about this too, just to get some general consensus from our parent group, and they were favorable. In 2015, as Gina said, we had this exact calendar where we did that. We tried to do the Friday and the Monday so that you do have that long Labor Day weekend. And any, there are many schools who do not do this. They do not come in before Labor Day, and mostly that is because their contracts with their faculty and staff prohibit it. Many contracts say they can't start school until after Labor Day. So those schools are not necessarily happy about whatever the plan is of coming after Labor Day. They don't have any options. And we're very different, and I know some of our neighboring schools, Chapel Claus, different also.
If we were to start after Labor Day, wouldn't we have to make up those days somewhere else during the year?
During the December break. So we couldn't, right, we couldn't take off the March break, because we really need those days in the event we have inclement weather throughout winter.
Right, and historically, the February break has been something that I think the community has continued to want.
And the February break is important for those college kids, the kids going to college, right? That is sort of like that, that last juncture, and the April break to get out there and see those schools before they commit.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, but that's the legitimate question of, do you think about the three days before Labor Day?
I just think it should be discussed now by the board to make sure everybody knows we've really given consideration about it.
Definitely, because I think that there will be some families.
I'm sure there will be.
The families that have kids that play sports in high school will be thrilled with this calendar because they're home anyway, but then if you don't, and you have younger kids or kids that aren't in sports, then it could be an issue in August. I think that it's one of those things, like going back to, no matter what we do, some families are going to find fault with it, and others are going to be jumping up and down, and that balance between the two weeks in December and the days before Labor Day, I think.
The one thing that I go back to is that we've done this in 2015, and we had no negative reactions in 2015. And this year, we've had one or two parents who have said, you know, it's hard, have been honest, and said, it's kind of like hard to have my kids around for two weeks, like I want them to have more structured activities. I don't mean that, you know, it's true, right? Let's call it what it is. They've said it, right? So, you know, that's something that I heard, but seriously, from like two people. So I think maybe, and I know that I'm pushing for this calendar, but I think maybe with the fact that we did it in 2015 without occurrence, we have that longer weekend attached to it now. This is why I support it.
It's not that they don't like their children.
No, not at all.
They have to work, and the kids are home, so it makes, it is.
I don't recall, 2015, did we have that Friday off as well? Was it a longer?
I don't think we had the Friday off in 2015.
We went from September, yeah, we went Tuesday and Friday.
And I don't know why I didn't hear from people then, when you at least won a long Labor Day weekend? Although that was before I was superintendent at Wayne Mills. I shouldn't be blamed.
I received an email from a community member today.
Oh, I made the calendar.
That pointed out, if we start after Labor Day this year, because Labor Day is so late, it elongates the period of time between when many camps end and school starts, so it creates the same conundrum of childcare, especially with two working parents.
Actually, no. Normally, you have three weeks off after camp ends, you do not have that.
Maybe slip away, but they were talking about the camps in town.
In town.
And programs in town that take kids for like full days. So it's like, no matter where we pull the days from, like there are, it'll create some issues, but I think on the margin, especially checking with the PTSA, and having done this in 2015, it seems okay.
Will the, it seems to me that, does this have any impact, not our calendar, but, well, maybe actually the start on the first, will this have any impact in the start of practice schedules for athletics?
Yeah, that's a good question.
No, the interesting thing, Gina, you want to?
Sure, so this year, the state had decided to postpone the start of fall sports one week later, so it is the 24th this year in August.
Wait, no, hold on. The start of varsity sports is going to be the 24th, will be one week before school opens?
Correct.
Which means then the competitions won't probably start till the week of the 8th at the earliest.
Correct, right, they have to get X amount of practice.
You need to get X amount of practices.
So the start of tryouts though, is that tryouts?
Yeah.
So start varsity sports is the 24th.
And Gina and I communicated with Matt Allen to see like, how cumbersome is this with, you know, school and with this new starting of sports, and he seems, Matt Allen seems to think he's figured it out.
Well, I'm sure the, whether he's, is he still the president of the Section 1 Coaches Association? I'm sure they've discussed this among the various districts.
He didn't seem to think it would be an issue for at least soccer and football at that point.
Well, we have a lot of sports in the fall, and I think it's our busiest season.
Okay.
We did it in 2015, and with no negative athletic repercussions, as I remember, but I don't remember as much as I used to.
And I guess in the benefit of this, since they can't play competitions without having a
Well, we have a lot of sports in the fall, I think it's our busiest season. We did it in 2015, and with no negative athletic repercussions, as I remember, but I don't remember as much as I used to.
And I guess the benefit of this, since they can't play competitions without having a certain amount of practice, is their first week of school, it won't be the games.
Well, that's right.
That's a benefit.
Right. It's a just short week anyway, that first week.
It'll be three days.
Tuesday.
Three days. Right, and they can still practice on the Monday and the Friday with no school.
Right, right.
Oh, actually, this is a year when the Jewish New Year is on a weekend.
Right.
That really, that really shows who shows up, that's really the test, really, who goes to temple on a Saturday and Sunday? It's easy to go on a Monday and Tuesday.
We lose a day off.
That's easy.
I just snored it.
That's easy. It's real, the real test.
So I guess with that, it's, it's been our practice over the last couple of years to give this one more, like one more...
I think we should, especially given the discussion, so, I guess we should just put, I, I move that, I don't know if it's a move, but just put it over for the next meeting.
Makes sense.
Make it an, make an agenda item for the next meeting, an action item.
I think if anybody in the community asks, which a couple have already, which I'll get back to, I think we could say, this is what the draft looks like, it's not approved yet, it's subject to change, but as of this point, the draft shows that we start.
We can show the draft.
Yep, 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 this is public, but just so they understand, like if they're booking airline tickets, they may want to wait, but certainly, at least to get an indication.
Don't get an offer from them.
Yeah, or at least get a place of one.
Some people plan.
So when you say that we could show it, I'm almost wondering, does it make sense to put it on the website with a big draft across the front of it and the date? I mean, you'll get less people asking.
I'm sorry, I asked this question, why are we, why are we, we're pushing it out in another meeting because we want to...
You know, I'll tell you the reason why, this must have been...
Typically, we do like two reads of it.
And it were a number of years ago, I don't remember, it was three, four years ago, where we approved it, and there was an error on it, and then we had to reapprove it.
I ask, I remember that very well. Everybody thought I was kidding around, and I wasn't, there was, there was an issue with the calendar. Also, because we always sort of treated the calendar like a policy adoption, because you want to have every board member weigh in, sometimes somebody's not here, like Lori isn't here for this, so I think, I, I'd be in favor of putting it on the website with, in red letters, "Draft", I think it's great, because when it comes up next time, it's been...
And to be approved by, to be...
Approved at the February board, or maybe we even say February.
Is it fair to say to be approved?
Or to be...
Considered.
Right, to be considered at the...
Yeah, to be active, to be active.
Considered for approval.
To be active.
I think, I think the community would appreciate seeing that.
Me too.
I think that makes sense.
I think we should do that.
To be considered for approval.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Great. All right, so with that, we go on to our next agenda item, 11.2, Policy 7500, which is naming. So just to give a bit of a backdrop to this, that in June 2018, we revised our naming policy, but last year, we had a number of discussions that ultimately was precipitated by a request to name a facility, which we ultimately did not do. But in that discussion, we talked about whether or not we wanted to make any adjustments to the naming policy. And the last discussion that we had, when Robin was still on the board, we talked about a few different routes to go, one of which is to keep the policy exactly as is, and as things come up. Obviously, I think we all collectively, Fiona wants to speak for anybody, but certainly the sentiment was that the bar would be very high to, to name a, a building or property, a facility after someone. Secondly, we could decide to tighten the language a bit and go back, send it back to the policy committee to be potentially even more stringent. The third would be to prohibit naming outright, and then the fourth would be not only to prohibit the naming outright going forward, but also to remove the names that exist today. Though that was like the continuum of, of what we had discussed. And at the last meeting, we really didn't have consensus to do anything different than what we had, so we all agreed that we'd come back and revisit the discussion. So I would open it up to see if anybody has any like updated or new thoughts, and we can go around and decide whether we want to continue to have discussion, whether we come to some conclusion, whether we, you know, kick it back to the policy committee if there's specific direction, but it could be an open discussion tonight and see where everybody, you know, comes out.
I'm happy kicking it off as the newest board member. I remember the June meeting where I was not on the board, but I was sitting in the audience, where the board talked about this issue, and I've thought hard about it over the last two months, knowing that we would be having this conversation. I think I fall somewhere in the middle of the spectrum, one end being, we shouldn't be in the business at all of naming facilities or programs, and also potentially stripping names, and the other being, you know, a liberal nominating policy, which I don't think my understanding is anyone favors, you know, that extreme. You know, my position is that we should be in a position where we have some flexibility, although I do think that we should have very high standards. I think we need stringent requirements, maybe we tighten this up even a little bit more in policy, but I don't think personally that having a, what I think is a bit of a draconian policy of saying, you know, no way, no how, never, I think that's unnecessary and, and just prohibits us in the future. I know Scott, you had mentioned at, I think, the June meeting, just as a hypothetical, you know, there could come a time where there is a program that, you know, someone wants to donate large sums of money towards some sort of program and wants to have consideration for the program being named after an individual, you know, I don't think that's something that we would do lightly or should do lightly, we'd have to strongly consider it, but I don't think we should have a, a policy written stone saying, you know, no way, no how, never. So I think, I would, at this point, I'd love to hear everyone's thoughts, they might have evolved, I, I remember what everyone's position was at the time when we talked about this, or you talked about this in June, but I think the policy as is, however, should be rewritten with, I think, some stronger language. Again, I, you know...
What type of language would you suggest?
I mean, I think the bar has to be high, and I think the process...
We already have five board members.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know, and I have that circled saying that's, and a star next to it, because that's definitely, you know, more than the majority. I have to think more about the language and, and how I think it would read, but I think it has to be something where it's, it's very uncommon where we would name. Again, I don't want to give the impression that I think we should be naming programs or buildings liberally, but I think it's something, in the right situation, we should just have, keep it open.
Thank you. Anybody else want to share with her?
Yeah, I, my opinion hasn't changed. As a rule, I would say we, we're a public school, and I don't think we should be, we should be in the business of naming, and I would give pause to any large donation that was being made contingent on a, on a naming. I mean, that would, that would concern me, that if you genuinely want to make a donation to the school, to a public school, on the condition that it's named, named after you or named after somebody else, that, you know, that doesn't sit well with me, but so, so I would say, my, my feeling is that we should change the policy to have a policy against naming. If a special situation comes up, the board at that time can open it up for discussion, and they can, they can change the policy again. I mean, that's, that's the board's role. We've been talking about this for well over a year now, and I think we've had, you know, very, very detailed, in-depth discussions about it, and based on those discussions, I think that's how, that's the direction we should go in. If another board chooses to have those, that level of discussion again, because some special situation comes up, I think they should have that level of discussion, it shouldn't just be, oh, okay, you know, we can, so we should. They should have lengthy, lengthy, detailed discussions before, before it would take place. So I would say we should not be in the naming business, and the policy should be amended.
Are we, are we just also making a distinction between signage and plaques versus the naming? I mean, I know there's a distinction in, in the policy.
Yes, it's a major distinction between a plaque which goes in a hallway somewhere and naming a building or a room or an auditorium after someone, it's a major difference.
And our plaques have been plaques that say "donated by", which is different than, you know...
This, this discussion came up because of a request to name the high school auditorium after a former drama teacher. We never, it was never thought that what we were doing was addressing a plaque or something that's in our Hall of Fame or something along those lines.
Do you want me to, to address whether, whether we should retroactively?
Only if you think we should.
I, I just, I think in theory, we should. The logistics of that is a whole nother story. In theory, yes, but I'm certainly open to discussion about that, because the logistics around changing the name of the middle school is, is, you know, they're significant.
Oh, I, you know, I feel that, you know, historically, whether it's a public institution, private institution, you know, buildings and programs and things are named for people, it's been historically done, and when grants are given and money is given and people ask for it to be named in memory of someone or whatever it was, it, it is done. I don't think, and I know we say it's a public, it's a public school system, but there are many public facilities and bridges that are city-owned, and I mean, there's things named for people all the time. So that, I mean, that, that's one issue. I, I was in favor of the policy, we all helped write it together, I think that when Ira suggested that five board members have to vote, I was thinking that that really, there in itself, laid the groundwork for, for, you know, a safety net, so we, we wouldn't, you know, go crazy and say, oh, this, this big sum is coming, and we have to name it because we have to take this lovely gift and keep it. You know, I, I like, I like having this policy, I think maybe we can look at the wording again of it, I, I think that we should leave it, leave it open, I think that we need to look at each situation as they come in, each gift as it comes in. And in terms of stripping names, previous names given to things, I think that that's, that's a very, you know, that's a very big thing to look at, that's saying like, you know, prior boards, that's taking away prior boards, things that they did.
Except, except some of the naming that took place did not take place in board pool.
Well, that's another issue. So I mean, but I would look at those situations case by case as they come in, and that's not in here anywhere, so that's something that the policy committee and the board can really look at, like that, nothing about that is in here, you know, as situations come up or, or things of that nature, but I, I'm not, I'm opposed to naming buildings, I'm opposed to naming, you know, programs, I think, I just, I'm not opposed to naming per se, depending on what it is, and, and also that it's given, you know, you know, a lot of depth and a lot of time and so looking at it, and the board's consensus on things, at least five of them. So I would, I would leave it more open. I, I like our policy, and I like the vetting process that we came up with, but that's just my personal opinion.
Very succinctly, I would agree with many of the, mostly everything you said, Lara, and I'm, I'm in that camp, I think the policy is restrictive enough, gives enough thought in and around the energy and how we all feel. I, I feel like the policy is pretty consistent, for the most part, with the, with the consensus of the board, because that's where the policy is now, not, not minimizing anybody else's feelings, and that's why this board works so well, is because we're all listening to each other, and we all have opinions about things, and I, so I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with anybody's points around it, but I think the policy is, is carefully constructed and requires a fair amount of energy to get something named, so...
I think what the, what the last two years has shown us is, requests for naming doesn't happen all that often. Like every year, we have four or five people come, we want to name the cafeteria of so-and-so, or the men's room of so-and-so, what have you. That being said, the more I think about it, I will repeat what I said before, we should not be in the naming business, I think, we're just leaving ourselves open to trouble. When a request comes into name, oftentimes it's a request for someone who's been gone from the district for quite a while, we have no reasonable way to investigate whether that name is appropriate. I would take in the words of people who are usually very, very much in favor of it, and Lord only knows, even if five board members, good and true, decide to do it, I always dread the next week, someone making a phone call, didn't you know this about them, about him or about her, how could you not have known that, which would put the board in a horrible position. I don't think we should be in the naming business, I don't think we should name anything after anybody, with all due respect to the great Mike Galino and equally great Joy Varley, I don't think we should have things named after them. We are a public school, and public schools do not, should not be naming. And I, so I really do agree with Mia's comments. However, I think we've spent a good amount of time on this issue now, and maybe it should be left, maybe we should give this policy a chance to see how it works, to see when the next time is that something comes up to be named, see if it works. So I, I guess while I do agree wholeheartedly with Mia, my world is not going to come apart if we decide to, we'll leave the current policy in place for now, see how it goes, but I would make one comment to Jason's statement, which is, if someone tended a gift to the district, condition on being named, I would out, I would reject it out of hand, without even, I wouldn't even care if it's money necessary to fund everybody any, for anything, that I think would be a horrible precedent. I'm not saying you're recommending it by any means, Jason, just the example you posed. I, I think we have to be very, very careful with that, of buying a name, you know, in memory of so-and-so or the, whatever, that, that to me is the, one of the nightmare scenarios of the naming business, that a board would consider saying, you know, we really could use the money at some point, it would be so terrible calling it the John Jones Gymnasium, he's willing, he or she is willing to fund $200,000 for the next three years for upkeep, whatever. I really hope that no board would ever succumb to something like that, that to me would be real trouble.
I agree with you, but I think we also have to, if, if, if a large gift is, is being offered to the board, I think it's our responsibility to be able to have a policy that allows us to look at that, negotiate with whoever is giving it.
Hey, it's up to the board.
So if you put something in here that says we don't even accept it, you know, look at things, then you're, then you're also denying our children something that could be, I'm not saying we have to name, you know, you have to leave it open for, for a board to look at, for the board to, to discuss, like open for discussion, and like we've been doing, I think that that's our duty as board members, I, you know, that's how I feel.
If we're going to tighten up the language in the policy, I would say we should not put anything in there that would equate the amount of the gift with...
Well, of course, no, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying...
Because that just opens a whole nother...
Of course, I'm just saying gifts in general, like it could be a million-dollar gift, it could be a $5,000 gift, but it's our duty to look at all gifts that are being, you know, are coming in.
More likely it could be certain type of technology, where you put it to every classroom or something like that, and who knows? But I don't know whether, what Lori's views are on this.
I can share what I know, and I won't speak for her verbatim, but I talked to her about it just because I knew we were talking this tonight, and she comes up more on the spectrum of having a comfort around the way the policy is right now, you know, potentially, certainly if somebody had a tweak to it, then that would be something she would consider, but I don't think she falls on the spectrum of saying that we should outright prohibit. And from my standpoint, I would say that I'm comfortable with where the policy is too. I, I keep coming back to my own mind that this is a policy that governs us and future boards, rather than a policy that governs students or teachers or some external constituency. So we've set the bar high in this, we truly have, because we really don't have that many things that are, that are five votes, and I keep coming back to, we ratify a very large budget with four votes.
Well, that's right.
So this is a serious policy and has serious constraints, which is good, because I think whether it's us or whether it's a board 10 years from now, there should be a rigorous debate around this, and the bar should be high, but I feel like it's impossible to know all the permutations and, and, you know, things that can come around the pike, and to have that flexibility for us and/or for future boards to at least consider is not a bad thing, given that we've already stated pretty clearly that the bar is very, very high.
And I don't want to belabor this, but I just want to mention one point that Mia made that I thought was, should be just repeated, actually. The point of saying, of adopting a policy, saying, we do not, we will not name, does not preclude future boards from saying, we will, it's just a statement of our view at this time as a policy, we do not think it prudent. So nothing ever stops a board next year from reversing every policy you adopt, you know, if they're so inclined, and want to put the district in the tank, if that's what they want to do, but, you know, we, no, no one's ever... But, you know, we, no, no one's ever looked to tie anyone, any future board's hands down though to do anything they like. It'd just be a statement of this board's view at this time as a policy. But I think, I think the consensus of the board is clear at the moment to leave this. I would like, however, if the board would agree, just to revisit this, really in two years. I don't think we need to do that. I think in two years, the board should just take another look at, see, how often has it come? And maybe in two years, either there've been a plethora, a dearth, whatever, to see whether, take 15, 20 minutes to look at it. But I think this policy should be taken, to be looked at in two years.
That's a good idea.
Makes sense.
All right.
We named a new athletic facility for you.
The Irish Showman press box.
It depends how much money he wants.
I'll make sure I vote against that.
It's only going to be on a sticky note underneath the desk.
I would hope you would. And why, because that's what I would do.
Lara, it won't be outside, but I'll have a sticky note under the desk.
Thank you very much.
The Irish Showman press box.
The board. All right.
Well, thanks, everybody, for a good discussion.
That was great.
Good discussion. Good discussion. All right. Science textbook adoption.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Lappel referenced this in her budget planning, that she was planning for this. So, as you may know, the middle school looks at, they are on a six-year adoption cycle for new textbooks in the academic areas. So, this year, the science department is up for review and Chairperson Ms. Kay put together a committee and was looking at new textbooks and came across this book as being the best in terms of its alignment to our initiatives and our goals, including aligned to the idea of looking at phenomena and inquiry-based learning in science. It blends digital and print, so all students will have a print textbook, but also has materials online and interactive materials. It interacts with Google Classroom, which our teachers are now using. And all the units are aligned to real-world applications. And it starts with a launch and then comes back to and throughout the unit and then culminates in a project at the end that aligns to the launch. So, what we want to do is looking at this new approach is to launch it just in sixth grade right now. We have a strong seventh and eighth grade science curriculum. In the next year, to evaluate how that goes and then possibly we'll have a seventh and eighth if we think it's valuable for the kids. So, we seem to be, we're really happy with it now. We are going to look at doing a pilot this spring with one unit, so the teachers learn the materials and that will direct our professional development in the summer. So, we're asking for your adoption of this science textbook series. Anybody have any questions about it? Any motion to adopt Pearson Elementary Science?
Yes.
On paper. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent report. First, I want to talk about board goals and give a little bit of a mid-year update. Quite a bit has happened since you established these goals in the fall. So, for the first goal, excellence in teaching and learning, there's been a lot of new curriculum implementation and also innovations in teaching and learning. So, we will start with the fact that the board has been supporting program literacy, inquiry-based units, science, implementation of New York State standards. So, I'll start with math. First, Tim presented in November an example of what the math PD looks like. We had the consultant working with grades K to four on differentiation and dialogic math classrooms. And the PD is continuing throughout the year. Grade five, working with a consultant on a one-year implementation. Superintendent Conference Day, we took advantage of K-5 teachers studying math assessments of our new program. And continuing with year two of that intervention tool that we have discussed, Math Navigator. Remember, when a student's having difficulty with a particular part of a lesson, they immediately go to Math Navigator. And we're going to be bringing data to the board in the spring for a possible recommendation for that program. Regarding literacy, Peggy and the K-5 teachers visited a neighboring school district to look at their literacy program, artsy. Peggy and Mary Beth have attended several workshops on different literacy frameworks. Peggy and Mary Beth also engaged teachers in looking at the standards and state assessments and then examples of student work during faculty meetings and the K-5 committee work. Considering conducting a pilot of guided reading and interactive read aloud using Fontis and Penel's framework. And Tim and Peggy are reviewing also ELA and math curriculum in special education classes to really ensure alignment. You know, it's not just that you teach less of it because you're teaching or you teach it, you know, quicker or slower, you know, it's like nothing to do with that at all. We need a parallel curriculum to what is being taught sometimes and we need to look into that. And continue with year two of the pilot of the reading, writing and vote program for the level literacy intervention. And we'll bring data to the board in the spring for a possible recommendation for that too. That was just one part of the goal of excellence in teaching and learning. For innovations in teaching and learning, we had Dwayne and several teachers visit Bard College. You heard Chris talk about this a little bit. They met professors, they visited classrooms and they created this seminar-based classes in English and Social Studies, and Tim's going to talk about that in his staff report. Lisa and Chris, Lisa Pellegrino and Chris, continue to work with Michigan to evaluate our program in terms of college expectations. Our library media specialist, Letty Nardone, is now visiting high school and college libraries as we consider how we are redesigning the high school library. And we're looking to align that space and services with innovative models of teaching and learning, very similar to college libraries. Jen Layden continues to integrate historical thinking skills explicitly in social studies classes. And teachers are developing lessons and sharing amongst themselves, discussing what they observe in particular students in a collaborative effort. Melissa Stahl, Ira's favorite, has modeled lessons in world language to include global issues and she attended world language conferences at BOSI's, teaching workshops on integrating the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals into a language class. This work will continue throughout the year. And Melissa and I are also going to look at FLESS, the foreign language at the elementary level, programs in two different schools with Tim, just to get a sense of what are people doing in languages in the younger grades in other schools. And Kim Lappel and Angelo are reviewing with Deb Kay, science programs in grade six that include these phenomenon-based activities. Regarding student wellness, Tim developed a timeline for those follow-up surveys I spoke about before with the Stanford Challenge success. The focus of site-based this year remains on wellness. Tim did a really engaging World Cafe on issues related to student wellness that I attended. And he gave all the members of that group, Mark Brackett's new book, Permission to Feel. And Chris Walsh is actually holding a community book read on that in January and Tim's going to do it with site-based in February. Tim is researching behavioral support programs through BOSI's Child Guidance Study Center and is also working with Peggy and Jill on specific interventions to support multi-tiered systems of support for special education students. And the board's goal for a district-wide data team was met through the data team meeting twice to review district-wide data, set building-wide goals. Tim had his assessment report in September with the data team and they used the data to inform their work with then the building teams. Each building team continues to meet, working on their goals. And in February, Tim's going to have a mid-year check-in and then buildings presenting at the end of the year. And we'll get two data reports from Tim on state test results from HCC and from Dwayne Smith and Lisa Pellegrino next month. So, that was only your first goal. Nice job. The second, fiscal accountability and communications, as I said before, and I could say it over and over, the finance advisory committees, multiple meetings since school started to help with these budget guidelines and review facilities, per pupil costs and every other aspect. And, and on our finance advisory committee, we have very financially adept individuals who are asking all of the right questions and really a part of that budget. So, in September, Kelly had the per pupil expenditure report noting the changes in the calculation. October, we reviewed, the board reviewed and accepted the external audit. November, the board reviewed the comptroller's audit. November, Trans Finder, as per the board, conducted their evaluation of efficiency at the bus garage. They're now reviewing the results and will be consulting with the board. Is it going to be in our next meeting? In our next meeting?
It's March, depends on the schedule.
And tonight, we, you were presented with a five-year fiscal trend and the budget presentation. And for the third goal, leadership development and succession planning, let me just say that Tim, Gina, all of the principals and I are the result of this board's succession planning.
That's right.
And we are continuing to have discussions about many leadership roles that each administrator can manage and aspire to and also what teachers then might be considered by the board for discussions about pursuing an administrative. So, I would say that goal's working, as long as you keep us, it's still working. And goal four, education reform and advocacy, really monitoring federal and state education initiatives. I've been providing the board with the focus of the advocacy work of Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents and the Southern Westchester Council of School Administrators that I'm the vice president of. I've also shared the work of Lower Hudson Education Coalition and we'll talk more about the 2020 advocacy agenda a little bit later. The board supported my acceptance into the Education Policy Fellowship Program at Columbia University, where I'm currently looking at culturally responsive pedagogy to support equity as an advocacy agenda item. Board members and I have been attending West Putt Roundtable discussions on advocacy issues as well. Some of us will be attending the annual legislative forum to meet New York State legislators on January 30th. And Scott is also a voting member of the executive committee in his role as treasurer. Tim and Andrew Taylor attended New York State, this is Tim going back at the State. Tim and Andrew Taylor attended a New York State feedback session in November on data systems and state assessments. They advocated for local control, innovative use of technology to give timely results to districts and rethinking state assessments. Tim has communicated with New York State Executive Director of Office of Teacher, Principal Quality and Professional Development at SED on new APR. Be careful, right? Not you, them. The state is developing regulations to align with the new law and Tim is advocating for district control in the evaluation process. And Tim also is continuing to monitor curriculum information from SED, collaborating with all of our constituent principals and directors and chairpersons to get alignment of curriculum to the new standards. And last one is security. We had the adoption of the new district-wide, thank you Gina, safety and emergency management plan and review guidance issued by New York State Ed. We support increased surveillance at all buildings through additional installation and monitoring of cameras. We have the assessment of prevention strategies to protect the data assets of the district and development of procedures to respond to a data breach and continued training for staff on IT security and awareness, including monitoring of third-party storage, which is huge for us, and applications. So, I would say A++ to the board on your mid-year report card from the superintendent. It's a lot. Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Quite a lot of it.
Very detailed summary.
Yes.
Much appreciated.
Thanks. I have, I have two items. First, just going off the tails of the announcement of our science research students and the top scholars that were announced. At that day that was announced, I received from a former graduate of Byram Hills from 2008 who sent me his second edition of a book already. So, it's nine years out and he's already on his second edition, it's Jeremy Blum. And he wrote the book Exploring Arduino: Tools and Techniques for Engineering Wizardry. So, Jeremy was a finalist of the science research program that was called Intel at the time. Stayed in touch with him. He went to Cornell, went on to work for Google and then is now working for a tech startup. And it was this note that really struck me that I wanted to read. He said, "To my Byram Hills family," so he still considers Byram Hills as family, "although my penchant for engineering was clear during my high school years, I never could have predicted the trajectory I would end up on. You all saw my potential and gave me the encouragement and tools I needed to pursue it. Thank you. I hope this book inspires the trajectory of future engineers in the same way."
That's awesome.
So, it's nice he stays in touch.
Hold on, a tiny, a tiny few things.
What year did you say you graduated? 2008.
Jeremy's family was right across the street. This kid is truly an amazing kid, not a kid anymore.
No.
I'd like to have his balance sheet. Fabulous young man who's really doing and is going to do just some incredible things in this body.
Awesome.
Just following him would be something, something special, I think.
Tim, while you're on that topic of our Regeneron top scholars, we also would be remiss if we didn't mention that six of our students were Regeneron semifinalists.
That's right.
I'd like to name them Sam Abermann, Spencer Karp, Mary Mayers, Alexa McGrath, Carolina Pedraza and Owen Skrillaw. So, congratulations. And also a thanks to News 12. They did such a beautiful story on that program and those children.
It's wonderful.
It was really appreciated.
Yeah, there's still a lot of work in some other, a lot of competitions coming up, some presentations and it'll end in early June with our symposium. And if you haven't been to our science research symposium, it's really remarkable event.
But still, there's 300 in Westchester, 300 nationals, 33 in Westchester, of which six are ours. I mean, that's, they're tiny. That's pretty amazing.
It's really incredible in our kids. It's great work.
It's been quite a source of pride for many, many years now.
And I wrote about it in my packet that it really does speak to the way we work on curriculum in Byram Hills, which is why is that program so successful? And it's now being led by Stephanie Greenwald with our teacher Caroline Matthew and Megan Salomon, who are the teachers of that program. And we've had other faculty in that program as well. And they do a retreat up here. Every year, they do two days in the spring and the fall where they just leave the building, they come up to district office and they have a very ambitious agenda to review and reflect upon what's worked, what are some things that we've been talking about that we want to tweak, let's do some new things, and they come together. And if that continues improvement in allowing those teachers to come together for a day and come up with new ideas to evolve. So, they don't just rest on what's been successful, they're continuously evaluating what's working in that program and refining the processes and adjusting to the kids in front of them every day. So, it's not, it's very, it's based on the same outline and model and theory that was created originally, but they're tweaking the processes of implementation based on our current kids. And it's a really remarkable look at how we do continuous improvement. And I want to speak one more thing about, sort of an update or assessment report is in the fall, I present our state test data. And this year, I also added to it some other student exemplars as I want to continuously be challenging us to look at student work as well as, you know, in the vein of data as well. And I want to present some work that teachers are doing because it speaks to the professional development of our teachers and it also talks to the rigor of our curriculum and just give an example of some student work for you. I updated my packet, so if you looked at it before Monday, you can go into my section and there's a link to this site that has some things to student work that you can actually review and read this work. So, we do an author study in seventh grade where the students look at, Ray Bradbury is the author they're looking at now. And they read who he is, what led him as a, you know, what motivated him, what inspired him, what is his philosophy. They read lots of writings, they watch interviews with him, and then they do lots of activities throughout the unit and at the end, they do some writing samples to inspire by his work. And it's a way for students to really look at writing in depth and look at it from different perspectives. So, I want to share the work of Catherine Dawes in seventh grade. She's an English teacher and Andrew Benowitz is a special education teacher. Both have participated in our problem-based learning work. And Andrew Benowitz recently visited with Andrew Taylor and Dwayne Smith and a group of teachers. They went to High Tech High in San Diego last year, which is a model PBL school that we've been collaborating with some of their methodology and some of the professional development.
That's the high school from the documentary, right?
Yes, it is. Yeah, from Most Likely to Succeed. Yeah. Outline what the author study involves and what they're asking students to respond to and sort of the statement that frames the whole unit is, the quote from Ray Bradbury, "I don't try to describe the future, I try to prevent it." There's a science fiction writer in Fahrenheit 451, one of his books, among other things. So, for the final performance, the students have to use Ray Bradbury as their mentor to ask the question, "What do I want to prevent or fix as I consider my future?" And they have to express it in some written way that would become public. So, another thing Dwayne's working with the teachers on is how to make student work public beyond just performing for my teacher. Instead, this is going to be for the world to look at or some other audience beyond the classroom. And what we see when we do that, and High Tech High is one of the exemplars for that, is it elevates the students' focus on it. It's like, oh, this is really important because more than my teacher's going to be looking at it. So, you can go through my links and see some sample works. I put on just one image and some of you writing about it. This was something about, as you see, the titles are going to see the bleakness in some of this, but this is coming. in some of this, but this is coming from what our seventh grade students are thinking about and where they, what they want to write about. The student talks, he was inspired by this, also this work of this professor from Harvard, which is looking at elephant DNA to bring back the wooly man. I know why, I don't know. And then the student has some writing, so if you click on the link, you can actually then go in. What the student do, did here was creating a site which has then poems inspired by this that you could read, including some imagery as well. And the students put this together that is now shared in a public way. That's one of the examples.
And that's one kid who did that.
That's one student, that's his collection. They had to put together either reflection or poems, it could have been a short story. There's one called Too Much Intelligence, which is a really bizarre story. As you read through these, I have fun reading through the four periods of half of our seventh grade students' work. It was hard to stay in that, had to go read some other things in between.
Special task force against very smart robots is what I just read.
The task force, I read this as I scan. It is, there was.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's pretty interesting writing, and I urge you to go through, look at something later. And I'll just show a few others.
The lawyer will claim that applies to Congress, Too Much Intelligence.
This did a poem set, so it's a video, so he shows imagery and shows his poetry and reads it, and it's a video, so you could read his video. This was on climate change, a climate change prevention short story.
Wow, that's great.
Go through and read the writing in there. This is a website with various poems put together, and this is a Google site, you have to be logged into the Byram Hills account. Now, I read through dozens and dozens of students, and it was one of these poems at the end that just made me pause and really think of wasteland. And I got to the very end, and it's.
And then I checked that TSL, you didn't write it. Right, I did.
No, I know, a single ant stands on the ground mourning for lost kin, and curling up, sick to its stomach, dies. It was just a second, I was reading through these going all the way to, what are we creating in our kids? But again, this is the way to express how they don't want this to be their future. And it's really expressive work that these students are writing. And I think it's just.
It's terrific, too, the platform, right?
Oh, so awesome.
You know, we, we used to be writing, you know, typing papers, right? Now it's like, this is total digital production, you know?
It's amazing.
So it's a new way to express it. Yes, that's, that was an image from the robot one. I thought, oh my God, that's crazy. So I put that, I put that as the last image. I want to start showing student exemplars for one, and two, what I'm working with Ken Lappel and Andrew Taylor. We are engaging our entire academic chairs and directors right now on ways to take student performance like this. And how do we have a tool where we can evaluate this year after year and look at it systematically and organize it? So what are the skills and knowledge kids are learning through doing this writing, and how can we organize that so we could look at a, you know, a sort of a scattering of work in our district, sort by various indicators, and have some evaluation year after year of what this work is representing along some measure? So we're in the process of trying to develop something like that, that I hope I can come back to you at some point and share some of our work, or at the beginning stages of putting this together. But we have the, all the academic chairs and directors are working on this with Ken, Andrew, and I, on how we can do it. So we're trying to challenge ourselves to get beyond just state testing data is the only metric we have to systematically analyze how well we're doing, but looking at student work. So I do want to present exemplars occasionally with you, it's just a record of our work so we can be looking at students' writing and find a tool or looking at a way to look at this over time like we would at state test data.
It's very, I really would be.
I urge you to look through some of these exemplars that I'm sharing.
A key performance indicator would be a student sending a book back like that that he received.
That's pretty good, too, right?
And that, you know, that's what's amazing, that's.
Pretty awesome.
That won't show up on the dashboard.
It doesn't. And it says to our Byram Hills family, which is, I think it really said a lot. I mean, I, I'm like, he still thinks of this as his family.
Yeah.
He does.
It's amazing.
It's great. So thanks.
Thank you. All right, on to board reports.
So.
We have Kelly.
Oh, sorry, Kelly.
And then I have one thing after Kelly.
You're going to top me, right?
No, I don't know. That's, Willie Mann, Willie Mann back there.
You've been watching a lot of Ice Age, though, you know.
Very true, very true. So just quickly, the, our new internal auditors did their risk assessment, and I attached it in my section. For you, really no surprise in terms of areas of high risk, they're pretty much the same in any school district based on the nature of the transactions. I did this year, asked for their recommendation, being new to the district, having just got through an assessment where they spoke to many people in the district, did some sample testing. And they recommended purchasing and accounts payable, which I thought would be a good idea. They've noticed that our prior reports, because we've had the same audit for a while, have not been as in-depth as they've seen in the past. We've kind of picked areas where we wanted to look at, you know, we want to look at reserves, we want to look at here. So they're recommending, because it's such a potential risk area, very high, that we do purchasing. So I'd like to recommend that to the audit committee, and if anybody has any other suggestions I'd want to do with this.
I think it's a great opportunity to go with their recommendation, given that there are new pair, a new, new fresh set of eyes coming in, and I'm supportive of that.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have one last thing before board reports. As we know, at the end of last year, the Byram Hills Education Foundation celebrated 25 years of supporting our children and programs. And this may be interesting to many members of our board who may have been on the BHEF in the past. I just felt like we needed to take all of those donations and give a proper little thank you card to the BHEF. So Brian Melso and I, benefit of having our own media and communication center, put this together, and it starts with a letter from me to the BHEF thanking them for 25 years of grants that have really set Byram Hills apart for our students. A look back at the last decade of BHEF grants, and there are so many. And then a really nice display of pictures and explanations of some of the grants that we've had, particularly within the past decade. So this I will be blasting out to the community to show them that their contributions to the BHEF and all of those amazing BHEF board members who are dedicating their time to helping every child in this district can really be commemorated. So thank you to the BHEF. Yes, I just gave it to them Thursday.
That's real nice. Are you sending this in the mail, or is it going to be an email?
I'm going to do an email of this, yeah. And that will be next week after we have a parent night with some potential BHEF connected parents.
It's awesome to see this organization just as strong as ever.
And we don't really say thank you back, right? So as a school district, I was hoping this little thank you card would, was a great idea.
I was struck by two things at that meeting. One was just the, the new blood that's on that board.
Oh, yeah.
There is a nice group of, you know, new community members and faces that seem to be equally as committed as, as those of us in the past. So that was just a great feeling. And then, you know, lastly, the efforts of things, even like little things like Insta Grants, where they continue to be quite popular, and, you know, they're getting lots of Insta Grants, so.
I remember when Whiteboards was a big deal.
Yeah. And now we are looking, we just finished our RFP process for money that was granted for us to do a multipurpose court at Crittendon, next to the lumberyard field, and we will also have a track deck sort of amphitheater seating with a platform that's going to be adjacent to it. So really just creating an incredible space for kids, for outdoor classroom space, just multipurpose volleyball, basketball, soccer.
Something that could do your recess, right?
Yeah, recess and PE classes.
All that's going to do is keep drawing people to Byram Hills.
So thank you to the BHEF.
Kudos to Brian. I mean, this came out really.
He's amazing.
That's a very nice start.
Nice collaborative effort there. That was it.
Actually, there's a picture of my daughter in there, so.
So the only thing I wanted to just mention is that there are three West Putt events that are coming up that are relevant, very relevant. One is the legislative forum that Jen mentioned on January 30th, which is really the, you know, the chance that we have to get in front of the Westchester delegation. On February 13th in the morning, there's a panel on school start times. This is a topic that's being discussed all across the county and clearly all across the country, given that the state of California did all their schools at once. So it should be interesting, and it'll focus on everything from busing logistics to athletics to community impact and to science. And then on March 26th, there's negotiations and legal workshop, which members of the board have attended, you know, fairly regularly in the past. And if you're available that day, it's very value-added, and they usually cover a lot of topics that are, that are important to contemporary times.
What stage is that?
That's March 26th.
So we have an agenda-setting meeting that morning, we'll have to figure that out.
Oh, okay, we can just move it to a different time or a different day that week, whatever works for you. Anybody else have any, anything to mention?
No.
All right. For communications to the board, there were two regarding calendar questions and opinions, and then there was one communication regarding a potential gift, not yet at this stage of anything to report on, but, but an idea. So anybody else have any other?
Any naming attached there?
Unclear. So.
Naming requests, not naming.
Anybody have any comments, questions on the December 10 minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call in favor? All right.
Thank you.
And then we're not going to adjourn because we have two executive session items that we need to revisit that we mentioned before, item 2.1, legal matter, individual employee, and 2.6, board of education matters, succession planning. So we're going to go do that.
I move to adjourn to executive session for covering those two items.
Second.
Okay, call in favor? All right, thank you very much.
Anyone want to give this to me to give to Janine?
Yes, please.